Live from Miami, Florida.
I am Linda.
And I am Bella.
And this is her podcast Mostly Peaceful Latinas where every week we will discuss current events, politics, pop culture.
And everything else related to the state of the clown world.
Hello and welcome to another episode of Mostly Peaceful Latinas. I'm one of your hosts, Isabella.
And I'm Linda.
And thank you guys so much for tuning in this week. Before we get started, please smash that subscribe button and give us a like. Share our content with your friends. We are 100% self-funded, independent from the lizard people in the new world's order. So any help that you can offer is always appreciated with our content.
So we have a lot to cover today. A lot of wins down in Miami, but we'll get to that in a little bit. And it's honestly been a great day for us. I'm having the greatest day ever. I've been, I mean, there's just so much that we're gonna get into on how good it is to win.
To win.
To win.
Especially against a machine that seems impossible to win against.
Yeah.
Right? When you have George Soros just literally buying out the media, all the Latino media, you kind of get demoralized. And you say, well, what am I gonna do? But then you realize that no matter what they do, they buy off the media, they persecute people, they take away Trump, they do it all, and they still lose time and time again. But with that being said, we're gonna get into the hottest topic of the internet right now, which is Andrew Tate. So, very controversial person on the internet. I think he like rose to fame in the last couple of months, like someone I've never seen before.
Right.
In fact, the first time I saw Tate was on TikTok. You know, I like to go on TikTok late night and just kind of like laugh at all these TikTokers. I don't necessarily follow politics or anyone in particular. To me, it's just like more entertainment than anything. And I saw a comment that he made about Islam and I was like, wow, like he's so right, right? And I kept that to myself. I didn't know who he was. I didn't know he was big with the Gen Z or that he was being called a misogynist and all these things. I just remember him saying that Islam is the only religion or movement, whatever you want to call it, that's standing up against the woke world. And I said, it's really true because they have not bended the rules for anything. Not the LGBT, not feminists or anything at all. They stick to their morals, to their values, to their culture. And I was like, damn, this guy makes a lot of valid points. I didn't even know his name. Honestly, I saved the video not knowing who he was. And then a few days later, I see my friends posting it and I see all this controversy around that and all the feminists are going crazy. And so I will say that there's some stuff that could be inflammatory or come off as a little toxic, but I also understand that he's an entertainer. Do you understand?
Absolutely. I think that there is, there's a lot of him just trying to get a reaction out of people, right? And he's very, people have a very reactionary type of response to his content. You either hate him or you love him. I mean, there's people worshiping this guy. I think he has a sketchy past, you know? And I, look, I know that he's been censored and I am not one for censorship.
Right.
I think that the minute that you open up that door on any direction, then you're opening up the door for you to, for your own censorship to be justified. But you know, the trafficking stuff, the woman beating stuff, the fact that he's actually glorified child traffickers, like those are stuff that are concerning to me, particularly where it seems that he's been getting a lot of traction within our circles, right? Troopers, patriots, people that, that conservatives.
Men look up to him.
That are looking up to his content and I worry that it's not a Trojan horse of sorts, right? Because you've got characters, we talked about characters before, like Elon Musk, where conservatives falsely believe that anything that Elon does is driven by preserving any kind of conservative values when that really isn't it. Elon is out for Elon. And I wonder how much of Tate is also.
You know who else is like that? For the conservatives, Barstool president, which right now he's in a little controversy with that guy Alex Stein. But in terms of Andrew Tate, he has a controversial past and kind of like a little dirty past. But I, I'm always very careful to trust what the media has to say about someone, given the fact that we know what they've tried to do to Trump and people like ourselves and many others. He has his side of the story about what happened in the past. I don't think we really need to get into that in terms of like the so-called trafficking and stuff like that. He has though made his money from OnlyFans women.
I mean, he's a groomer. I saw a whole bit about him talking of men about how to take women's virginities. Like that's grooming, encouraging men to lie to women and lead them on for three months in order for you to be able to take someone's virginity. That's, that's a form of grooming. So I do feel that there is a disconnect where I love the, you know, the preaching of the sigma man of being an independent thought, you know, of being independent when it comes to thought. And you know, standing strong on toxic masculinity, which I completely applaud. But I feel like the problem with Tate and why he becomes a Trojan horse is because, you know, part of being a strong man is also about being a protector and being able to protect women. I like being the submissive gender. And you know, a lot of what Andrew preaches has to do with demeaning women and not giving them value. And you know, it's again contradictory. You can't take a movement that's anti-human trafficking, anti-porn, anti-all these things. And then also at the same time amplify a voice like Andrew Tate that's, you know, making money off porn, that's a groomer, that's been accused of trafficking.
But you know why? There was an article, I think, today, and I think it was The Blaze, and they talked about both him and the Barstool guy, Barstool's guy, and they said, there's such a lack of male figures and masculinity in our culture that they're just grabbing on to the first males that kind of fill that role. You see what I mean? Because we just don't have that and the media doesn't allow it, right? So I did see a video which he claims to be an act and it could be, it could not be of him and his ex-girlfriend and him like mistreating her and almost pretending like he's hitting her and stuff like that. And it's just like, even if you do that, like you're in a culture, you're in a political culture and a political climate where you can't really play around with things like that, even if you want it to, because the consequences are that you're gonna be banned off the internet completely, right? We don't have to agree or we can and cannot agree. We just don't control these apps, YouTube, Facebook, Instagram, TikTok. We simply do not. And so if you put yourself in a situation and decide to create this video of you like beating up a girl or pretending to beat up a girl and telling her what to do and all this stuff, you're setting yourself up for this type of failure because you could have had your message. You could have even said a lot of controversial shit that we may not agree with, but you could have possibly kept your platform.
It's also like.
The violence was the problem.
Portnoy had a similar problem last year when they leaked the sex with his sex tape, where it was also very, you know, aggressive, violent sex. And I mean, if it's two consensual adults, then it is what it is. I think where the problem comes in, it's more so the message that now it's sending to young men and where it is weaponizing our base to some degree, because here you have impressionable men that are being reprogrammed from a society that tells them to be promiscuous, to want to have many women, to worry about the cars, to worry about the money. And then you have somebody like Tate that's kind of preaching within the, you know, women should be feminine and have respect and men should be strong. But then on that same token, you're really not. And I'll be honest with you, dude. Like I heard him, there was an interview that somebody asked him, like, have you ever been in love? And he goes off and he's like, oh, you know, yeah, I've been in love with the women, somebody treats me bad and I'm out. And like, really all it sounds like, it's just like, he's a dude that got his heart broken and like, he's never gotten over it. And now this is the other side of it.
That's why he has to wear the glasses and have this entire persona. I mean, he's tall, so granted that he's tall and like fit, then he looks like, you know, it's like, when you say, okay, if you build a body, you get like five points. And then if you have like this personality, then you get an additional point. That's what he did. So he's not necessarily like the most attractive guy and I'm sure he, maybe he got his heart broken. I don't, I don't know the past. But there is something dorky about him and I see that at the menosphere, especially on Twitter. There's all these dudes.
There's an insecurity about him. Like you can see that he's hiding an insecurity.
Right, absolutely. And there's all these dudes online who have gained this persona in the last couple of years. It's called the menosphere and they're all preaching about being an alpha and this and that and like, oh, I'm gonna fuck all these broads and da-da-da-da. And like honestly, like I've met some of these guys in real life and I'm like, you're just a fucking dork. Like you could have the hottest fucking body, like you have a six-pack and you're whatever, like you're cute.
And you can drink your raw milk and.
Your energy, you're still a little insecure beta and it radiates off of you.
And Tate gives that off some.
Right, it absolutely does. But you know, I think that it's just getting him into kind of like the Trump status where the more you attack him, the more you ban him, he becomes a martyr. And his fanbase just becomes like stronger. So before he was banned, I would see him in the TikTok algorithm, right? And even YouTube, but now it's like extreme. I mean, like now every other video.
It's either his content or somebody talking about his content.
Dude, it's like non-stop. And like, there's like this video going around that's like, you know, the, the guy's at the gym and he's like doing push-ups and lifting weights and whatever. And he's like, oh, you know, if Tate is so dangerous to women and he's a misogynist, then how come Cardi B is still online? Like, how come you won't ban porn? And like all these things that, you know, you do have the question. I mean, it's true, right? I saw a video of this girl, I don't know her, the name, she's a rapper, she's a reggaeton artist. And she was just at Baja Fest in Mexico. She's on stage and she's literally starts drinking out of a dog bowl, like because her song, the song's name is Perra, which is means bitch in English. And so she's pretending to be a dog and literally drinking out of a bowl water. And I'm like, dude, you know, you can't say this guy is a misogynist and you yourself and so many other women put these selves in this situation.
Well, that's his argument. His argument is that it's like, these women, they're not victims of myself. I made these women money. They were women, they were gonna try and sell their body anyways. And I put them in a position where now they're millionaires. And that's his argument, that it's like, if women allow themselves to be put in this degrading position, then can that really all be on him? Which is an argument that I completely understand, right? I guess that to me, it's always just, you know, when you have a platform, and we talked about this in the past, there's a certain responsibility that comes with what it is that you put out there. And there's things that I do hold myself back from saying, because I think about what the bigger repercussions are. I think about the people who maybe are not as tapped in or informed as I am, and I would hate to be a source.
Younger people that look up to you.
I would hate to be a source of leading them in the wrong direction. So I think that there is, and probably somebody with an ego like Tate probably doesn't get this part, but there does have to be a certain level of responsibility when you've got a platform to the message that you're putting out and how, what kind of impact can that potentially have on society? And when an entire generation of young boys and young men are looking up to you, and you have to be a little bit more careful, because I think that at a minimum, he can make the distinction between bitches and women and show men like.
And you'll say that from time to time that he talks about like his niece, for example, like his brother also is like popular, not as popular as him, but he is, and he talks about his niece and how he doesn't want a world where men mistreat women and stuff like that. There was a video that I thought was pretty nasty of him talking about how he was like having sex with a girl. And in the middle of it, he started remembering like all the times that she was a bitch during dates. And so he stopped having sex and she was like crying. And then he like left to like go from hotel to hotel to like have sex with different women. And like that message to me, even if men want to argue that biologically, they inherently be like, oh, I, it's just men, like men need to have a lot of sex, men can't have one partner, men are meant to spread their seed. We can get into that conversation later. But to me, it's also about energy. Like it's not energetically, how do you say, sanitary for you to sleep with five different women on the same night, or men for that matter.
And not just because of the idea of diseases or anything.
And then transfer that energy over and over to all the different women and the women that they've slept with other men. And that's just me. Like I've started seeing sex in terms of energy like in 2017, 2018. You know, it took me a lot of years to get that concept. And men may say, well, I don't give a shit, you know, I'm still gonna have sex with 12, 13 different women a night or a month or whatever. But it doesn't take away the fact that you're still contaminating yourself with all the energy that these other people carry every single time you have sex with them.
Energetic residue that remains with you. Absolutely.
Correct. Because every time you sleep with someone, it's like they're gaining like a part of your soul and you're giving them a part of your soul. You don't have to see it that way, but it just is.
I mean, to kind of like wrap up that topic, you know, with me again, I feel like he is a Trojan horse. I'm very careful to not glorify him. I know that he's definitely somebody that's popular right now, particularly with the cancellation. He has become a bit of a martyr figure. I personally don't feel like he embodies what I, where the direction that I feel like our party should be taking and where society.
Forget the party, at least the movement.
Right, should be taking. And therefore I shy away from glorifying him, but I do, you know, I also say that he shouldn't have been banned because we see, you know, degenerate things. Look at the dark Brandon meme that we were just looking at.
Allows porn. Yeah. Twitter literally allows porn on their platform.
Yeah.
So I just, and Instagram, it's literally a castle of horse. Like every time, all the new reels, to me, it's just girls twerking on thongs, in thongs or bathing suits or whatever.
TikTok and they're all like little dances.
You know, it is unfortunate that, I'm not saying that he got banned or didn't get banned, but that they're just making him into like a bigger figure than he is. And I know that part of his like scheme to make money is that his Housers University people like post videos of him. Barstool guy, which, which kind of relates to this topic, he has like a 22-year-old girlfriend. He's a 40-year-old man. That's what he's known for. He's known for going to colleges, Barstool, whatnot, and having sex with all these girls who are very, very young. That's why actually the mainstream media was coming after him. Barstool's guy is someone else that I think is a grimy character. I don't care if he's worth $500 million as he says. He recently got into an argument two days ago with Alex Stein, that comedian, that conservative Republican. I also don't like Alex Stein. He's not my type of humor. I know conservatives are like drooling over her and he's just not my type of humor. I don't follow him. I just don't like him at all. But it was pretty cowardly of Barstool guy because he invited him on his podcast and he uninvited him when he saw that Alex was like trolling like pro-choice women. And Barstool's is a huge pro-choice guy. Like you cannot touch that topic for him because he gets freaking crazy. So it's just two people that I don't think men should glorify by any means at all.
And characters that are just not cut and dry, right? The same thing that we say about Elon all the time. Like they might have some points that coincide with your way of thought, but these aren't people that we should be glorifying or, you know, posting up on some kind of platform and awarding them any kind of recognition of praise of, you know, the direction that we want to go in. Not when things are so morally lost and where we're at. We need to have clear thought leaders on where it is that we're going. And I just don't feel that Tate is that direction.
Especially for the culture. You know, speaking of the culture, we are taking back the culture locally. And in the state of Florida, which is the freest state in the nation, it's the reddest state in the nation, is the nation where the state where woke dies, as our great governor said. And yesterday was the primary elections in many states and places, including Miami-Dade. We had a huge win to, to our.
Had the biggest win.
Miami-Dade is in the news.
After a year and a half of declaring war on the school.
Quite literally war.
Literally declaring war on the school board. And you know, not from a trolling perspective, but we saw what parents had to go through during COVID and how these school boards ignored the cries from parents to please, allow them the opportunity to be involved in their children's lives. And the school board just said, no. We watched as the governor imposed regulations that would have protected parental rights and the school board say, no.
And then the teachers, the teacher, the president, Carden Max, the president of the teachers' union, who's a nasty, nasty woman. You know, her entire argument was they're outright groups, they're far-right, they're science deniers, they're anti-maskers. It was always some sort of insult to.
Towards what she considered the political opposition, because as much as they claim that it isn't political, it very much is politically driven. The union clearly has a bias and preference for one political party over another. All that to say that yesterday Miami-Dade County flipped two school board seats to conservative, so conservative incumbents.
Miami-Dade is now the largest conservative school board district in the entire nation.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations to you too, ma'am. And of course, our enemies, to our enemies, we couldn't have done it without you.
We really couldn't have done it without the resolve that you fed us day in and day out.
Every single time you call us a fascist.
Every single time that you post about us, it will only make us want to go against you harder. And that's exactly what we did. And we brought change to Miami-Dade. We brought change all over Florida. I believe that there was something like 13 different districts that flipped seats to conservative seats. We had five counties that now have a conservative majority in their school boards. And Florida has fought like hell to secure that. Let this be a testament to people that are like, oh, a company, a country is gone, it's ruined, election fraud, just give up, whatever it is. You can literally drive change if you just get involved.
And we've been talking about local activism. And again, we were not local activists at all. We were just content creators. And we decided to get involved during COVID, like most people did. And I think that a lot of times we felt like this was going nowhere. We're wasting time. This doesn't make us any money at all. In fact, it's been a huge headache for us, losing our platforms, you know, being targeted, huge target on our back.
Dogs that got fired.
Dogs, like there's, there's been a lot of negative aspects of us trying to help out these parents. But I guess hard work does pay off and it's great to gloat on this victory and it's great to tell our haters that we're not going anywhere, that their little efforts to try to intimidate us and parents into just, you know, into submission, you know, it's just not going to happen. So two of the school board members in Miami, it should have been three, but it's okay.
A 26-year vet and a 24-year vet at the school board district.
Both Republicans.
Forced into retirement and the other one lost. For the first time, both had ran completely unopposed. At least, at minimum for the last decade, had ran completely unopposed in their seats, had no idea what an actual campaign would look like, because when you run unopposed, there's nobody to counter you. And for the first time in years, they saw what the response from the parents were. And it's so important for them after the wanting, I just keep on getting flashbacks of them kicking, locking doors on parents, turning off the microphone on parents. They tried going on TV saying that it was extremists, that they were being harassed. It's just so beautiful to watch. The people of Miami-Dade showed up and they were very clear that they were no longer going to stand for the involvement of the school board. And I know that it's a sad day. Clearly, Mataperez woke up in tears today. Carla Mads have to, has to have woken up knowing that.
Carla Max was holding on to the one win, which was that Maritere Rojas kept her seat. And Maritere Rojas kept her seat because she was running against Sandra Mazari or whatever, Mazari. Who, you know, she tried, she did really well, but like.
She didn't have the governor's endorsement. And she didn't have the Jimenez machine behind her. And here's the point that I made on my page earlier. You guys can celebrate Maritere saying on the school board all you want. The only reason why Maritere was allowed to remain on the school board is because she ran as a conservative member of the school board. Had Maritere been honest and upfront about how it is that she's actually voted with the school board over the last year and a half, it would have become very clear to people voting that she is not a conservative. But y'all got away with it. Y'all let her run as a Republican. Y'all let the little grift go on a little longer. But here's the deal. Now, we don't have anybody else to focus on except Maritere.
Quite literally her, while Luisa Santos is the other one. Dr. Gallin.
Who will not be superintendent of Miami-Dade County.
And there's another one. There's Luisa Santos and then there's Gallenberg.
Yes, yes.
There's, there's definitely a few.
The global homo. I mean, like holy shit. Like if they could, they could, they would literally have their graders dancing in thongs at Palace Bar because they're that fucking degenerate.
Yes.
But with that being said, just a message to our enemies. You fucking lost. You lost. We're not going nowhere. Call us a Q-Tart one more time. Call us a fascist one more time. Because every single time you do that, we get more emboldened, we get more support and we take you down even further.
Every time you call me a Q-Tart, a new Republican voter is added to the voter log.
Every time you call me a fascist and new journalist has to close his or her account on Twitter. Call me a fascist one more time, motherfuckers.
It's a huge win. And you know, we just think it's really important to share that testimony of what it was that we did. There's nothing special about us. Like Linda said, we're not activists. We just didn't shut up. And it's something that realistically every single one of you can do from home, city, just being involved, looking at your school board members, watching what they're doing, showing up to one meeting a month.
A month, bro.
One meeting a month. And look at the change that we've had. I've seen so many people asking like, oh, what did Florida do? How did Miami do that? It's simple. Get involved. The results are there. Take back your republic.
That's it. Honestly, you know what? Here's another message to people that are constantly saying, get out of the big cities. Get out and run for your lives. Like you can't expect change if everyone's just gonna move to Wyoming and Montana and leave the big cities up to the leftists.
Right? Yeah, they can.
What, what, how are they gonna do it?
It's gonna come out of nowhere. It's all a matter of comparing. I've heard people say like, oh, whoop-de-doo. What is flipping the school board gonna do to fix the 2020 election? It's like, you guys swear that this is only one problem. You swear that we haven't been subverted at every angle. And quite frankly, are you guys dumb and ridiculous? Do you not realize that children have always been the target? That the longest governmental entity that exists to our children is the education system? There is no fight that's more important than the school board.
No.
There is no fight.
There isn't. Well, that's why the Santas got involved. Yeah, it's like unprecedented that a government, they literally made that a point. It's unprecedented to see a governor endorse and get involved in local school board races. That's never happened before. But he understands the fight. He understands that teachers are now activists, most of them who support BLM, most of them who support the LGBT. And they're quite literally indoctrinating children, some of them into suicide. We talked about it in our second podcast, two different stories of parents whose kids in middle school committed suicide. One of them died very sadly, the other one, I think, attempted. Because the schools, yes, because the schools were helping these kids to go through this transition. So again, you're not too little to be able to make a difference. Something else that we have to talk about with Miami-Dade Bella is the voter turnout for primaries. It's so sad. We get so many people. I mean, I haven't gotten them lately, but we get so many people. Why is Trump endorsing Maravida, blah, blah, blah? Why is Trump endorsing Marco Rubio? He's a rhino, she's a rhino, he's a rhino. Number one, we don't have enough, like we don't have other candidates to support. And when we do, you guys are not out there helping them a doorknob. You guys aren't out there doing phone banks. You guys are not out there even voting. 15% of Miami-Dade voted in the primaries. You know how sad that is?
Yeah, that was, actually, the final number was 18%. 18% was the final number. And that's, you know, and here's the thing, guys, that's the turnout with Republicans and Democrats, the same.
Right.
It's just, there is no, and we had this conversation, I'm sure that that won't translate the same to a presidential election, but I feel like people still haven't grasped the importance of midterms, much less primaries to midterms. The primaries are the single most important time. And here's why. The grift is easy to spot. You, the rhinos are going to have money bumped into their campaigns. When you need people to knock on doors, guess what? That costs money. There's 25 grand. When you need to have a mailer campaign, guess what? That costs money. That's 15 grand. If you, these smaller America First candidates that are truly just doing this for the sake of saving our country do not have access to those funds, do not have access to those resources that these rhinos that have remained in power for some time have, which is why, again, these wins belong to all of us. You, people need to be dedicating time to knocking on doors, creating phone bags, being on the polls. This is what makes the difference. If not, you have a candidate that has a million dollars in the bank and therefore can put up a thousand more signs in his neighborhood, can have a thousand more doors to knock. And they're gonna win not because they're the better candidate, but because they've got more exposure. And the only way that we can battle that is if regular Americans get involved in this very important process.
Even, even with these two candidates here in Miami-Dade that flipped the school board to a conservative majority, the reason why they were able to do what they did, number one was the Santas endorsement. With the Santas endorsement, you have PACs and people that are gonna throw money at you because the governor has your approval. So I think it was like the public's errors that she donated to a PAC that went to these people. You know, somebody like Sandra was like running on fumes. So she, she can't do what Maritere Rojas, who has Jimenez's legacy backup, you know, like she was like self-funded and Balsada Communications. If, let's, let's say, for example, Maravida Salazar, that a lot of conservatives are always talking about her. She's a rhino, she was with the Democrats, blah, 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 right? She was running against a guy, Polo. I don't know the guy. I don't know his platform. I don't know if he would have been good. Maybe he was a grifter. I have no idea. But let's say that he was the true America First candidate that we wanted to win. Could you imagine if we had 50% turnout, but that other 35% would have been all for Fran Polo? He wins the primary.
Right, right.
He wins the primary. We have a 5% turnout and most of it is going to who? Because who's voting? The people that care and know. The older people mostly, not the younger generation. So there you have a problem. So for those of you who complain about the rhinos and why, oh, Trump is fake, the Santa's fake, everyone's fake, bam, 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 everyone's in on it. You're not even involved, dude.
You're not involved. You don't care. That you push, and everybody's always like, I don't trust this person, I don't trust that. So you run. If you can run, then tell your cousin to run. Tell your friend, tell your former boss, tell somebody that you do. Tell your friend, tell your old, your former boss, tell somebody that you do trust to run that whose campaign you can get behind. But the one thing that wins elections is effort. It, and it's effort from a party. They're either gonna buy the effort when you have deep pockets like the Rhinos and the Democrats do, or you're gonna have to grassroots it out. And if we're, the true grassroots doesn't come from just sending five dollars here and three dollars here. It's a lot more valuable when you're dedicating your actual time, when you're melting off in the heat because you're knocking on fifty, a hundred doors and one day for a candidate to get your message out. There is nothing more valuable that you can do for your country than to be involved in the civic process. And that includes very much being involved in elections, primarily the primaries.
So now we are in August. You have, this month is basically over. You have about seven days. You have September and October. To find those local candidates in your counties, in your districts and help them win. Because we do need to take back the Senate. You see the bills that this creepy old man is passing in the White House. You see that, right? And the backing that the Senate, they have the majority, right? Or they, it's split down the middle and then Kamala is like, the, the, whatever vote. So if you are doubting on how to get involved, now it's the time for Miami Dade, for Broward. Everyone's going down my DM about Broward and Palm Beach, Broward and Palm Beach. I don't know the politics of those places. I do know it's very corrupt.
Right.
But I know it's not impossible.
Well, no, I mean, anybody would have looked at the situation down here in Miami Dade and would have told us that it was impossible and we moved mountains.
Nationalists who are shitting on conservative Latinos all the time, ah, Latinos, blah, 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 blah. Dude, we're doing a lot more than some of your majority white counties. Like, I'm not trying to get into the white race, but I'm kinda getting a little tired of white people shitting on us all the time. Not necessarily all conservatives, but mostly the na- the white nationalists. It's like, bro, what are, what are you guys doing? Our county is about to be freaking red by twenty-twenty-four, if not before that. So I think we, uh, have earned a little bit of respect. Kinda sad that Sabatini lost, but I wanna talk about the first second.
It was the one L that we, that I would say that really, cause I mean, people were talking about Lumer, but honestly.
I don't care about Lumer. I, I, I wanna talk about Sabatini for a second because it's the perfect example of what I've told people before that social media is not real life. Okay? And Sabatini had a huge online presence on Twitter, on Instagram, on Facebook, on his Telegram. And he had, he was everyone's favorite. You had DC Draino, who has like two point five million followers shouting him out. You had Anna Paulina, you have people like typical liberal. People like ourselves, um, you had Matt Gaetz, you have Marjorie Taylor Greene, I mean, you had the biggest MAGA uh, personalities and politicians praised this guy, give him his endorsement, even Ron Paul. And this guy lost his district, possibly for two reasons. Number one, when he was, this redistricting happened. He went into his district that allegedly not a lot of people knew him. The other guy had no social media presence, had about like a thousand followers on, on Instagram. But he was well-known in his community. So again, social media is not real life. With that being said, Sabatini is a star. He's not going anywhere. I'm sure there's a plan for him as well. Um, and we're, we're gonna see more of him, for sure.
Yeah, there's definitely no, uh, Republicans took no L.
Yeah, there was no L. Miami anti-fascist.
Nice try, like, eh, let's document the L's, no, bro, no, no.
That, that didn't happen, bro.
You like astronomically lost. You remember a year and a half ago, I told you, motherfuckers. Not only am I gonna find you, but we are gonna make a national example out of you. And here we are, August twenty-twenty-two and Miami Dade County has the biggest conservative district in the entire country. So, take that Carla, take that Jenny, take that Billy, take that Sonia.
Thomas Kennedy and the other fucking goons. So when I first started making content in twenty-eighteen, this one video that went viral was called, Why Barack Obama Treats DACA Recipients Like Side Chicks. Vice saw that inviting me on their panel, the rest is history. The reason why I said that is because when the DACA program was enacted back in twenty-twelve, Obama literally said that it was not a pathway to citizenship. So everyone's praising Obama, oh my God, he's protecting like, I don't know how many, like one point something million kids. And they have their legal and they can work and they can go to school. And it's like, sure, but they're never gonna be citizens because there's no legal path to becoming a citizen. So they keep extending the program. Some of them have to marry for papers.
Well, now these kids are grown adults. Like, now you've had kids that have been in the school system.
Thirty-five years old. I, I know, I, I know a friend, yeah, I know. Um, but, and then in the video, I talked about Trump and how Trump offered them a, a legal path to citizenship. If you met certain requirements, including not having a criminal pass, blah, 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 all these things. On three different occasions, Trump offered to give this kid a pathway to citizenship in exchange for the wall. All he wanted was his money for his little fucking wall. That's all he wanted. Of course, the Democrats who have been playing games with these kids for whatever amount of years, not for ten years. They didn't wanna give him a pathway to citizenship because if they do, they can't.
Keep bringing it up during elections.
They can't, they can't keep playing around with them.
Every single election, every single election in those poor DACA kids, those poor DACA kids. First of all, those DACA kids are mostly grown right now.
Literally, like, they, they have children themselves.
They live absolute Americanized lives and the fact that they are still being used as a pawn and that every couple of years, they have to wonder what's going to, what the long term of their residency here in the United States is going to look at. It's cruel. It's cruel. It's, 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 it's absolutely cruel coming from the party that claims to care about immigrants. They consistently put immigrants into these boxes that limit them.
Absolutely.
That don't create opportunities for them. It's like you, you wanna keep the brown man down. It's, of, of course, they don't wanna create a legal, so now they just extended DACA again.
Mayorkas, Mayorkas today, he, um, sent out a memo from the Department of Homeland Security saying that he was gonna fortify DACA. And that, um, you know, what's funny is in the actual text of that memo, which I have it right here. It says, um, affirms the longstanding policy that DACA is not a form of lawful status, but DACA recipients, like other deferred action recipients are considered lawfully present for certain purposes. Basically, a nothing burger. So you guys are still in limbo.
Yeah.
You have no legal pathway to citizenship and you're probably not gonna have any until Democrats are still in control and Rhinos are in control. The unit party wants to keep you that way.
Well, and also expect for this conversation to come up again during twenty-twenty-four. When the election cycle opens up again, and then they're gonna tell you that Trump doesn't want you and that Trump wants to send families back and they're gonna start with the entire thing. But remember, Trump wanted to create a pathway to citizenship. And remember that it is the Democrats who time and time again continue to hold that back because they love having their little DACA card in their side pocket to be able to pull with their BLM card and their Roe versus Wade and whatever else it is that they use to energize their, the, the, the anger and the fear out of their base because that's how Democrats get people to go out and vote for them. It's not based off hope for better, for a better country. No, they hate this country. The only thing that they know how to sell is fear. If you don't go out there and vote Democrat, then they're gonna ship you back to your countries. They're gonna make sure that you can't kill babies and they're gonna take away your rights as a woman. You're gonna have to ask men for something. They're gonna, that, that, yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's just, it's always the extreme story in order to be able to sell you the fear. Democrats don't want you to go out to the voting booth and vote with hope of a better America. They want you to go to the voting booth and vote in fear of what could potentially happen to you, which nine times out of ten is complete.
And, uh, you know, speaking of Trump, he's being blamed for the vaccine, which is actually something that Alex Jones predicted. Alex Jones a few months ago, and it could have been last year, I don't remember the exact date.
Couple of months ago.
He predicted that Trump would be blamed for the vaccine side effects. And the Democrats are doing it right now with their media allies. So there's a couple of articles out there in the Washington Post and Politico.
New York Times, the Associated Press have all ran articles saying, so basically the storyline that's being built right now is that Donald Trump and his administration fast-tracked COVID, um, treatment. So whether that be the vaccine or whatever, it may be pr- probably a vaccine. Cause here's what's happening. You can no longer hide the fact that healthy adults are dying for no reason. So now they're gonna have to explain away all these stuffs because the light can't continue anymore. Clearly, the COVID narrative is dying.
And the side effects too.
And the side effects.
Women, the periods, all that stuff. We have very careful still on YouTube, but we say, but the point is that they're obviously trying to choose someone to blame for what is happening. And I don't even think they care because you know, I'm an anti, right, pharma juice altogether. And I can tell you that the hepatitis B, I think, had like a two-week study on children, like that was already out for adults. But when it was mandated to babies, it had a very, don't quote me on this, but it had a very short amount of studies for babies. And they didn't care, they approved it and they just started.
Well, because it really has nothing to do with the, with the, with the safety.
It's about creating a narrative of Donald Trump because they know his base.
Correct. They've been watching us and they know what triggers you. And they know that a polar, a polarizing topic within the Trump base has been the conversation of vaccine. So what better way to split the vote than by blaming Trump now? And again, using the fear, the anger that people rightfully have and now having them with the help of the media, target that anger towards Donald Trump in an effort to slow him down. Another thing that the media has done is that now they're propping up Ron DeSantis as the anti-Ju- the pharma juice guy. And then Trump as the pro-pharma juice guy to then create the ideal, which by the way, both Trump and Ron DeSantis have said that there is no bad blood again between them, that it's all created by the media. Uh, Ron DeSantis has made no suggestion that he's gonna be running in twenty-twenty-four for anything except governor of Florida. But the media nonetheless is still trying to create this narrative where first they can split the base into the people that are, that hate Trump for the vaccine and the people that don't. And then split it further by then being like, oh, well then I'd rather vote for Ron DeSantis cause he's anti-shot. And, and Donald Trump has been the vaccine salesman. It's unfortunate, they pulled an okie doke. Cause what they've done, and it's unfortunate because, you know, we've said it, Donald Trump quite some time ago should have stepped away from the, the, the conversation about it.
At least not bragged about it.
Not bragged about it. I understood the decision.
I, 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 I think his, his bragging of it, which I knew came from his ego to try to prove to the world and to the Democrats and to the establishment that he did create the vaccine in a shorter amount of period of time that they told him. That he did expedite it through the FDA, that he did bring a solution to millions of people around the world. I think that.
And that he prevented twelve-year lockdowns.
Right. I think that, that, that ego really hurt him because he's out there in his base and talking about, I'm the father. What is it? The Pfizer, Moderna, grandfather, whatever, daddy. And it's just like, you're setting yourself up for failure and now we don't necessarily know how the base is gonna react. And I tell you something. For, for being the side that, that kind of prides itself and being so woke and anti-this. And, um, we don't fall into the media narratives. They fall into the social media, social media narratives time and time again. We saw it during the twenty-twenty, uh, lockdowns when there was a co-conspiracy theory that DeSantis had approved forced vaccinations for Floridians. That happened to be in a text from like fourteen years ago. They don't know how to rebuild, they don't understand it at all. So then when you try to explain, hey, listen, this was there, this is the way that, da, 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 then you just say, oh, you're just, you're just, uh, simp-y for DeSantis. You're just a DeSantis simp. It's like, no, I'm trying to explain to you the reality of things, but they fall for narratives all the time. So I am sure that the Trump base, especially those who were already anti-Trump or returning against him, oh, DeSantis this, DeSantis that, are gonna be riding the wave and trying to trash Trump again.
Yeah, well, we're already seeing it. We're already seeing the people that have made their efforts being anti-Trump still being.
Guys, and also, don't forget that we have new merch. Our merch is selling quite fast for both men and women. We have the far-right Latino summer and Latina summer. Um, for both genders, you have tank tops, you have t-shirts, you have crop tops for girls. So go to wakeupwithlinda.com for now, while we transfer that to the mostly peaceful Latinas, uh, domain. And, uh, get some of our merch. It helps us pay for the studio. It helps us pay for any little expenses that we have and we can continue to grow.
Again, not funded by the lizard people or the N W O. This message is so fun.
So I think that, you know, this is where.
Speaking of, um, of the vaccine and COVID and all these other cool things, um, Grant Keebler Elf has made his announcement. Yeah, the Grand, Grand Keebler has made his announcement that he will be retiring and stepping down after a career that spanned out about what, five, almost five decades?
Yeah.
Been in power thirty, thirty, I think it was thirty-eight years, so go forty.
At least thirty years. Uh, sorry, at least thirty years.
Uh, thirty-eight years. So, um, Grant Keebler has said that he is retiring. And again, I wonder how much of this is all connected, right? And the, the numbers are shifting. They know, they've, we already know that the CDC has now claimed that it's not airborne. You don't need to stand six feet away from each other. Basically, every single thing that us, you know, crazies, were telling you about three years ago. Now the CDC says, yeah, that was right. Thank you, the CDC. A lot of people would like their pages back that were deleted and taken down for misinformation that now you have been quoted and saying was correct all along.
Particularly on the masks, so many people.
Particularly.
Particularly.
Um, knowing that, seeing now the media shift into trying to blame Trump for the vaccines that we are seeing because it's several ma- big media sources that are putting this story out. Do you not think that it's coincidental that, um, Fauci is retiring? And also noted that, uh, what was her name? Byrd? Uh, was it Birch? Birch also retired.
She retired like what, two years ago though?
A year, it was last year. It was last year. Yeah, it was last year that she retired. She retired last year, but still nonetheless, when she retired, she made a point to say that it was almost like the backlash, that she was concerned with, with the backlash that was going to come.
That, you know, with Fauci, there's a lot of these characters that they, they kinda pick and choose, like, okay, who we need to put in front of people to love. Like with Fauci, he was kind of like the Zelensky for a while. Like, I think when Zelensky came around, I was even making a joke like, hey, have you seen this guy? Like, we hadn't seen Fauci in like a whole, like, two or three weeks after seeing him every single day. I mean, people literally had like Fauci pillows, Fauci cellphone covers.
On Vanity Fair.
Vanity Fair, they thought it was the cool guy. There was like Fauci cartoons.
Man alive and like people.
You know, there's like certain characters in clown world.
Made Fauci the sexiest man alive on evil magazine, fucking nerds.
So, so do you see what I mean? It's like they, they pick and choose when like they can like just get rid of their character. And I think that it's time for Fauci to retire. They're still trying to milk Zelensky a little bit, even though he's not really on ours, like here in the US. So I don't, I don't know what's gonna come of Fauci. I see a lot of Republican talk about, we're gonna hold them accountable. And it's like, well, you're gonna have a hearing, like you have hearings for everything. Like you had hearings from Mark Zuckerberg and for Jack Dorsey and for everybody else that has screwed us over in the last five to six years and you did absolutely nothing. They're still walking free. They're still living off retirement or they're still living off their millions and people are still getting censored and banned, their political persecution. So I don't really have any high hopes or expectations for Fauci to be persecuted, at least not under Biden.
Right.
At least, and even under Trump. I mean, Trump has some of the weakest people around him, just kinda telling him, just to just be, just to be.
However.
Just, just not be like a dictator or whatever.
Let's talk about that though. Let's talk about that, right? Because I remember back in twenty-twenty, the argument was that everybody was like, why does Donald Trump have Fauci around him? If he knows that he can trust Fauci, why does he have him around him? And I think that it was absolutely genius to get this character that for the last fifty-sow years, forty, fifty years, has been hiding in the shadows, basically controlling like a puppet master every single aspect of the pharmaceutical industry to some degree and how our laws, uh, protect the, the industry. Uh, and nobody knew who he was. Anthony Fauci could have sat next to you at a, you know, at a restaurant and you would have had no idea who he was.
Right. So he exposed him, I'm sorry, he exposed Fauci.
Like, he pushes them into the spotlight.
But at the end of the day, Bella, I wasn't necessarily talking about that. I'm talking about certain advisors and people around Trump that were not great, right? We know that. We're talking about the Kevin McCarthys of the world, his own daughter, Jared Kushner.
Right.
Um, so we'll see what comes of this all. But we do wanna wrap it up now, guys. We're nearing an hour and I wanna ask you guys to please once again, hit that subscribe button. Share, like and support us because we want to make sure to bring you the clown world news every single week. And we'll see you next week for sure.
See you guys next week.